And, okay, the recording is in progress. Very good, so, good morning, I would like to call the Committee of the Hold to Order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Each member is acknowledging that they are attending the meeting via Zoom and that they are located in Wayne County, Michigan, unless otherwise stated when I call your name. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Basham?
Now that I'm unmuted, yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman?
Me too, yes.
Commissioner Dobbs has requested an excuse. Commissioner Hattis?
Present.
Commissioner Colleen?
Here.
Commissioner Kenlock?
Present.
Commissioner Kneecik?
Here.
Commissioner Morecki?
Here.
Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Present.
Commissioner Varga? Commissioner Varga? Vice Chair Protem Badum?
Here.
Vice Chair Palomera?
Here and in Ingham County, Michigan, this morning.
Thank you. Chair Bell?
Here, in the Guardian Building.
Commissioner Varga? You have a corn present.
Okay, thank you, and if maybe someone can give Commissioner Varga a text, thank you. Next item, please.
Approval of the minutes from the May 18, 2021, meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported, any discussion on the minutes from the May 18 meeting? Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Anyone wish to abstain?
Motion carries.
Thank you, next item.
Chair's remarks.
Okay, good morning, everyone, we are having a Committee of the Hold today because I think it's important that we get continuous updates on the ARPA funding, and that's the American Rescue Dollars. So today, we're going to have a presentation from the Administration on what they've been doing since the bill passed in Congress, and then we'll ask questions throughout the presentations, if you have questions on the particular slides that are presented. And then after that presentation, we'll, of course, talk about the flooding and what the county's response has been to the flooding with the update from Director Sturtevent and Director Watts. So at this point, I will go to the next item, please.
Unfinished business, there is none listed. We're moving to item E1 under New Business, Discussion with the Administration on Use of American Rescue Plan Act Funds.
Okay, wonderful, and I believe Mr. Khalil will start us off, and we do have slides. So whenever you're ready to share your screen or we have those slides, we'll go ahead with the presentation. I'll turn over to Mr. Khalil.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair, and to the rest of the Commissioners. So fortunate to be here with all of you today to talk about something that's very, very exciting, the American Rescue Funds. You know, we look at this as a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and how to create some, you know, real sustainable resiliency in our, in our community, in our economy. In this presentation that we're going to show you today, what I hope to accomplish is to provide you some information about what we did last year with the CARES Dollars. Talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan, a little bit about the amount of outreach that we have done throughout this process. Talk about the next steps and when people can expect, you know, some significant detailed information, and go from there. What I will say is, you know, you, you know, you're not going to hear today that we have allocated some funding towards an initiative or a project. You know, we're certainly not there yet. But what you will hear is our sort of philosophy, methodology of how we've gone about doing it, the amount of work that has been put in to get us to the point to where we are, and, and hopefully some expectation in times of when you can see some more of those details. We've had a lot of good, decent guiding, you know, principles for how we've been approaching this process. Now I'll be the first to tell you that we have been, what I would say is, methodical, strategic, you know, and, and we've been pacing ourselves for sure. But I feel like we've done that with good reason, and I think it's going to pay off for us in the end. You know, just some of the things that I think we ought to recognize, right, is, you know, we're still living with this principle of how important this, this circumstance that we're facing is. We recognize the money that we got here, you know, in a lot of ways is our, is our grandchildren's money, so we want to be very, very, you know, precise and cautious with how we spend it. And I'll tell you, there's been some good guiding principles that I think through our outreach themes have come up. You know, we are looking to be transformational with this opportunity. You know, we don't believe in using these funds to grow the budget, you know, I think that's a bad, you know, these are one-time funds. We, you know, we think they ought to be used, you know, for their intended purposes. We're looking for leverage opportunities any way we can, and we're going to be talking to you all a little bit about where we think those opportunities could exist. We're trying to embark on a very inclusive process. You're going to see part of this presentation, an immense amount of outreach that we've conducted to make sure we get feedback from everybody. And one thing that we have constantly in the back of our minds is how to use these funds to create a better quality of life in Wayne County, and ultimately, hopefully, generate, you know, more revenue. I will tell you, you know, our revenues are stagnant. We are still in the midst of the pandemic and possibly, and I'll let Janelle Allen probably speak more to this whenever the time is appropriate, but we, you know, we could see elements of a variant, kick our numbers up on the rise, you know, certainly, you know, we've experienced some serious flooding, and we all know about the Raffaelli case, so we shouldn't, you know, we're not in a place where we're comfortable to expect revenues to go up, you know, in, in years in the future. Don't know that they're going to go down, but there's really not a lot of reasons to think that they're going to be up anytime soon. And so, you know, we have to start thinking about generating more revenue so that we can accomplish some of the things that, you know, the counties always sort of wanted to accomplish. So we've got a lot of guests with us here today. Obviously, first, you're going to hear from Huey Newsom to talk about, you know, where we are with the CARES Act. We just submitted, you know, documents to Treasury to show how we spent the funds. I'm not ashamed to tell you, we're going to do a little bit of bragging about that, and I'm very, very proud of how, you know, we, we went through that last year. And then you'll hear from our consultants in Guide House who, you know, have, you know, have been phenomenal through this process. They have a lot of other municipalities under contract, including the state, the city of Detroit, Oakland County. And they are helping us keep a watchful eye on some of the best ideas from around the country. And so you'll hear from Phil Pierce and Jeff Bankowski and the rest of their team for how we go about doing this. And at the end, I hope to answer any of your questions, is that all right, Madam Chair?
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay. Madam Chair, are we sharing the document and sharing the screen, or is your staff, I'm sorry, I'm a little...
Let me see, Octavia, do you have it to share, it's not...
I do have it to share, Chair.
Okay.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. So if we could pull up the presentation.
Are you all, can you guys see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Great, great, all right, we're going to turn it over to Huey Newsom.
I am the CFO, floor is yours.
Hi, actually, I think Huey is running just a little bit late, so I can go ahead and get us started, and then he can kind of jump in, or if the Commission has questions, we can, can do it that way.
Go ahead, introduce yourself, yeah. That's fine, introduce yourself, please.
Hi, yes, my name is Gabby Bryan. I am a managing consultant with Guide House and the project manager with Wayne County for how we've responded to COVID-19.
Okay, great, thank you. Next slide, please, Octavia.
Yes, so, just wanted to go over very briefly kind of what we've seen over the last year. As Commissioner is well aware, we received a large sum of money from the federal government, $188 million in CRF funds. The county's been very methodical and thoughtful about how we've spent that money. And in addition, we've received $19 million from the state of Michigan, and that $19 million was received instead of the normal revenue sharing that the state does. And so we were responsible in stewards of about $207 million during the pandemic. And these dollars were directly, kind of, the purpose behind them was directly to address COVID-19 and a lot of its effects that we were going to see throughout our community. We can go ahead and on to the next slide.
And just let you know, Gabby, Huey has joined.
Oh, great.
Mr. Newsom, I don't know if you want to continue or allow Gabby to continue. And he may be muted. Until we can get that going, go ahead, Gabby, continue.
Okay. Yes, Huey, feel free to jump in whenever you are able to. So we wanted to provide this slide to just give you all a quick overview of how this money was allocated, how we were able to spend it based off of departments, so really thinking through, you know, the purpose of this money, which is to deal with the negative impacts that we saw due to COVID. So things like our economy shutting down, businesses being shut down, and that's why you see a large amount going to economic development. And that represented a lot of the grant programs that we did, a lot of the small business grants that we gave to make sure that businesses were able to weather the storm of, you know, COVID and it being shut down due to the social distancing mandate that we received from the state. And then, of course, you'll see a large amount going to our public health and public safety departments, so things like, you know, HHS, health, and Sheriff's Department. They received a large, vast majority of that, not only because of the essential services that they provide to our community, but also to, due to the guidance that we received from the federal government and that kind of ongoing guidance that we received from Treasury. The ability to, you know, allocate dollars there, we found was, not only made sense from a perspective of how to best deal with the pandemic, but also to from an administrative ease perspective with the federal government in a reporting perspective for Wayne. We can go on to the next slide. So now we're showing, and so basically, this is a different kind of perspective on how we spent those same dollars. These categories that you're seeing here are the Treasury category. So as you all know, these were federal dollars. Treasury had its own set of categories that we needed to sort these dollars into. As you can see, kind of a large chunk of that was the Small Business Assistance. And that was the Small Business Assistance that we gave to over 3,000 businesses, helping them to keep their doors open so that we can kind of keep, so that we can keep Wayne County vibrant. $6 million in support of direct assistance, direct cash assistance to those hit hardest by the economy being shut down. Of course, we have things like the payroll for public health and safety employees. You know, that again was represented in what we saw with a lot of that going to sheriffs and the folks who were providing those essential necessary services. And then, of course, health expenses that, you know, helped us do things like put plastic masks up and protect our residents to make sure that they were, we were all kind of weathering the storm together, providing masks, doing all of those types of things. And then also to COVID-19 testing and contact tracing that we, we did to make sure that we could keep a handle on where, you know, where we were seeing the virus show up and how to help address that from the government's perspective for its residents. Pause there and see if there are any questions. Okay, if not, we can move on to the next slide. So I really wanted to kind of use this slide to kind of dive a little bit deeper into the projects that we took on. Again, I, you know, we wanted to make sure that our employees and our residents were safe for the county. As you can see, public health and safety payroll, that was making sure that we were able to provide the assistance, making sure that we were able to pay and keep people working during this time during COVID. So a large, a large set of expenses there covering that, and then also to, again, focusing on that administrative ease for the county as far as reporting. We, Guide House and the county really worked hand in hand to make sure that we were basically creating projects and project coatings that were going to be easy for anyone to look at years down the line and understand kind of the methodology and the approach to how we spent these dollars and ensuring that these dollars were spent both in a way that was appropriate for the crisis, but also within lines of the federal government's kind of restriction on those dollars. Next was the Small Business Grants, which we, again, serve quite a few number of businesses. If you go down, a lot of those additional expenses have to do with tracking labor expenses, the additional labor expenses that are associated with those folks who were changing the work that they did day in and day out in order to address the, the crisis. And all of these, all of these categories, all of these expenditures have been checked for eligibility. They have memos written about them, and we have really good, clear line of sight to understand why we spent this money and how this money was spent. We can go on to the next slide if there are no other questions. So I, a breakdown of how these dollars were spent, basically from the beginning of the public health crisis during the fiscal year, during, you know, that aligned with fiscal year 2020 for the county versus how it was spent in the following fiscal year of 2021. As everyone on this call knows, we were, originally, these dollars were slated to expire at the end of 2021, I'm sorry, the end of 2020 calendar year. We were able to spend most of those dollars and account for all of those dollars during that 2020 calendar year. And so what you're seeing here is really the breakdown of how those dollars were apportioned kind of throughout the fiscal year for Wayne County, which I know the county cares most about. So just understanding that, you know, in fiscal year 2020, we were doing a lot of these expenditures around the grant programs and substantially dedicated and making sure that we were adjusting. And then fiscal year 2021 really represents, again, a lot of the payroll expenditures that we took care of with our public health and safety employees. And I also wanted to just highlight one of the things that we, I think, you know, we're very proud of to have been a part of, and Wayne County is, you know, just kind of took the lead here and really answered the call. They, you know, during the end of the year, we knew that a lot of people were hurting. You know, the, the state had decided to close down, you know, different businesses yet again because of the spike that we were seeing as far as cases for COVID, especially kind of, you know, post Thanksgiving, pre, pre-Christmas. And in order to address that, the county took on the challenge of handing out $6 million directly to its residents in $500 gift cards to 12,000 residents that worked in industries that were shut down by the state because of kind of the social distancing mandates that we had. And in recognition of that, the National Association of Counties held Wayne County up as an example of an achievement award, really thinking innovatively about how to deal with the prices that we're facing, different counties throughout the, the nation. So this is a national award, and we're, we were really glad, Guide House was really glad to be a part of this, and I just wanted to make sure that we showcase this achievement that the county received. And Khalil, if you had anything more to say to about this award, I'll hand it over to you to, you know, kind of give any additional kind of thoughts on this.
No, other than, you know, I think this is significant for a couple of reasons, you know, one, you know, not everybody got CARES Dollars last year. And in fact, some communities actually gave some CARES Dollars back because they didn't have the capacity to be able to handle and manage the funds. And I think it's so significant that, you know, I'm sometimes being asked to be on panels, you know, in every which way, folks to ask us questions on how we were so successful in administering the funds so quickly. And I think this is just another, you know, sort of seal to that, and I really want to, you know, thank everybody who was a part of it. I, I think it's also significant because it gives a lot of people confidence in us who are managing the ARPA funds for the same, for the first time. If, if the state of Michigan and Wayne County and some counties in the city of Detroit got some money for CARES Dollars, you know, we all know right now, the 43 communities in Wayne County, many school districts and others are getting money, and it's the first time sort of administering it. So it's good to know that they can look to us as a model and as a, as a, as a help for guidance to be able to do those things. So really very, very proud of it. And I know Madam Chair sits on the NACO board, you know, and I know that she represents us very, very strongly, so I can't thank you enough for your leadership.
Thank you. This was big, and I was happy, and I know many other Commissioners were able to hand-deliver those $500 gift cards to residents in our district. So this was a big boost to so many who have been devastated financially because of unemployment with the pandemic. So this was a great program.
One question, Madam Chair.
Sure, go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Rahal, you mentioned some of the community returned some of the money. Is that because of the restriction the federal put on the money? Or they don't have the need?
Last year during the COVID crisis, it was a combination of a couple of things. One, restrictions were not easy to figure out, for sure, and a lot of people didn't have the capacity to be able to figure it out. So we went and got national consultants, we had outside counsel, we have, you know, grants management staff. You know, we were fortunate enough to put the pieces in place to get the kind of guidance we needed to do programs like this and others. You know, but a lot of folks, you know, oftentimes don't want to take the chance because of federal auditing, and if they misspend any of the funds, then that money will eventually come out of their general fund. And so what we saw was communities give some of the money back.
And then the follow-up question through the chair, please. If, if they returned the money for one of those reasons you mentioned, and the county have the ability to comply and spend it, and that community with the restriction, with the respect to the restriction, is the county considered to do so?
No, you know, the, the communities in Wayne County, none of them actually got money of the CARES Dollars last year. This is not the American Rescue Plan, this is just talking about the CARES Dollars. So municipalities around the country, and some of them ended up giving money back to the federal government. And in Michigan, only Michigan, Wayne County, Oakland, I think McComb, City of Detroit, and I don't know if there's any others. I'm sure Guide House may be able to help me out there, but, but no, the, the money wasn't reallocated to us to spend for them because they didn't get mine in the first place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Colleen, Baker McCormick, then Basham.
On mute, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I, I have reviewed a document that came out of NACO with regards to the ARPA funding and what's available. You know, the rules are difficult and whatnot. But one of the things they mentioned in general is there's five ways outside of the lost revenue allowance the counties can invest funds, and supporting public health response is one of those. I also listened to Mr. Rahal talk about how we want to use this dollar, going, these dollars into the future to have a more sustainable county and have a better quality of life. So my question is a little bit of a two-parter. What of the $14 million that we have spent already, or any future dollars in the next year, is going to go to support public health? And if we have some idea about what those things might be, I don't want to necessarily get into them today, those details. But I want to see, I'm asking to see what kind of investment we're going to make in public health, and particularly with regards to the disparities in healthcare that all of a sudden everybody has learned in the last three years, and that's been an issue that's been out there for years. So how are we going to boost, for the longer term, our, our public health effort? And are we going to be addressing disparities in healthcare with these ARPA dollars? Thank you very much.
Through the chair, if I could ask to hold off on answering that question through the presentation, do you think it'll be beneficial that way? Because, because what I want to make sure we, we're, right now, we're not talking about the American Rescue Plan. Up until this point in the presentation, we've only spoken about the CARES Dollars that we received.
Right.
So we are, we are going to get to more of the American Rescue Plan funds further in the presentation.
Okay, I thank you for that, you know, a question started coming in, and then it wasn't clear to me that you were through with your presentation. So I will wait and come back and ask the same question again, very shortly.
I apologize, I think that was because of the transition that he offered, but yes, this is just CRF, a kind of review of the last year.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker McCormick, on the CARES Dollars?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to congratulate Khalil and, and your team on the efforts in appropriating all of these dollars. I know it was a, a lot of work in it, and you did a great job. My question goes to the hazard pay. There was approximately $4 million spent. Is there a breakdown on where that was spent, or who, or what departments received those hazards dollars?
Yes, we can get that to you.
Okay, you, you don't have any...
It's not, it's not broken down, so the visual, again, the, the, we, we wanted to give everybody an update on how the CARES Dollars were spent last year very briefly. The majority of this presentation is going to be spent on the American Rescue Plan, and we're happy to follow up with you with, with what you're asking for.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Basham?
Yeah, I'll be brief. Actually, want to acknowledge the Administration for the bond rating. Under all this crisis, actually, our bond rating went up, which actually saves us dollars for, for bonding for issues. But anyway, congratulations to Administration Khalil. But my second thing is, can we use that same funding for, like, county employees? Because we have a huge shortage of trying to get and retain county employees, dealing with their wages and their health insurance. Can we apply some of that going forward for employees? And can we also apply it to some of the county's facilities? Like, for example, Marine Patrol or Henry Rock, those kinds of things. So if you could just, if you can respond to that, fine, if you can't, we can talk later, thank you.
Great.
Good question, and now just say that, further along in the presentation, that will probably get answered. But if not, Khalil can answer specifically, but uses of funds and what the plans are for funds is going to be after, probably, this slide coming. But we'll, Khalil, jot that question down to ask, answer if it's not answered in the next slides.
Yep, and I, I totally agree with a lot of the things that Commissioner said. I think, you know, we, we believe salaries and wages are a significant thing, you know, at the county to address. There's no question about that. And I think, you know, there are folks in our administration, like Janelle Allen, like myself, that are dedicated to making sure to follow the CEO's lead on it, which, you know, he's incredibly dedicated to seeing something done on that. What I will say is, revenue is stagnant. The, you know, flooding of damaged homes, which hurts property values. We all know the outcome of the Raffaelli case, which, you know, is sending less money to the county's general fund. And that's where a lot of these things get addressed. We need to generate more revenue. And so we're thinking about that very intensely. Can you go to the next slide, Mr.? Thank you. Turn it over to Phil Pierce.
Good morning, Commission. Probably aware, Pierce Monroe and Associates has been working for the past fifteen months as a member of the consultant team with Guide House. Today, I will review at a high level the funding that's anticipated to be provided via the American Rescue Plan Act and what would be allocated, or has been allocated to Michigan and Wayne County and the state of communities. As you can see from this slide, the act provides for 1.9 trillion dollars. You might note that the state and local aid is second after individual recovery rebates in terms of the allocation. And that's 350 billion dollars that's been allocated for state and local governments. Move to the next slide. This slide serves to summarize, over the past fifteen months, we've experienced a number of revisions to the CRF guidance and the CRF frequently asked questions. That gives you some idea of the nature of the activity and as much as it's dynamic and we have to manage through that. We can't, when we make decisions based on the guidance and the frequently asked questions, it's continually changing and we have to adjust accordingly. And as we noted here on the slide, this top part refers specifically to the CARES Act. And the bottom half of the slide is referenced to the American Rescue Plan. And at this point, we have received an interim rule in May. There was a period that ended July sixteenth for comment on that interim rule. And then we anticipate that a final rule will be published sometime August, September timeframe. If the experience that we've had with the coronavirus relief fund is anything that we can anticipate with respect to the American Rescue Plan Act, we'll likely have several iterations of the guidance and frequently asked questions over the ensuing year or two. Next slide. This slide serves to summarize the dollars that have been allocated to Wayne County and State of Michigan. And if you look at the slide in terms of what's been allocated for Wayne County, Wayne County metropolitan cities, Wayne County non-entitlement units, those dollars alone account for 562 million dollars coming into Wayne County. This funding is generational, historic in nature, in as much as in my lifetime, I think most of our lifetimes, we have never experienced this kind of money coming into our community. I think it provides for substantial opportunities with respect to coordination among our communities to provide for effective utilization of funds. And it's a very, very great opportunity, if you will, for this area to provide for substantial benefits of the community. I'll move to the next slide. This serves to basically summarize the rationale that was utilized for the allocation of the dollars to the state of Michigan, the city of Detroit and Wayne County, make note in Wayne County's cases, based on the county's population share of the total population of all counties, using the 2009 census data, because 2020 data is not yet available. Move to the next slide. This simply summarizes the dollars that have been allocated by local units of government within Wayne County, the metropolitan cities and the non-entitlement units. And I think some of you, I mean, most of you have seen this information before. Okay, any questions on my part?
Yes, I have a quick question if I could. Commissioner Anderson, I just wanted to ask, I've received a number of complaints about the differential between communities, what they received. And just wondered, what was the formula that was used? Was it strict, it was not, it appears not to be strictly per, per capita. So could, could you address that?
Are you speaking of the non-entitlement units?
Yes.
Okay. Gabby, you have a, a response to that?
So, you know, I, I can take that one. So the, the non-entitlement units are, you know, it's, it's a kind of a based off of a, both kind of population and then as allocation. Interestingly enough, that is actually all being, that is all being coordinated by the, the state of Michigan Treasury. And then on Friday, we actually have the state of Michigan Treasury who's walking through the full methodology at the 1:00 PM Wayne County Small Business Roundtable kind of meeting. So we actually have Treasury and they're walking through their, their entire methodology. But it is certainly a, a, a multiple. And then they're reviewing a percentages of how it's calculated relative to previous budgets, if that.
Would, would someone be able to send that out once it takes place and they just?
Yes, definitely.
Because I, if people that have reached out to me, like to be able to share that with them.
Yeah, well, there's actually a deck that will be prepared and we'll be able to send that to you on Friday afternoon.
Great, thank you.
And I'm sorry, Jeff, just so I'm clear as to what you just said, just the state of Michigan decided the allocations for the municipalities within Wayne County?
No, it's actually established i- i- kind of in statute, but they're administering, for the non-entitlement units, state of, the state of Michigan Treasury, is administering and sending it out. So depending on the size, dollars were sent directly from Treasury or through the state of Michigan Treasury.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Marick.
Oh, oh, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff, Commissioner Anderson, I believe, was asking about this chart. It is right in front of us. Isn't what you're talking about, the ARPA? The ARPA money that is coming in? Are you talking about the same thing as what the chart is on right now on our screens?
Yeah, so if you look across, you can see there, there's two different definitions that are in the American Rescue Plan. There's what's called metropolitan cities as well as non, non, non-entitlement eligible units, kind of the, and you can see, if you look across those dollars that on, on the left, i- i- we, if you see like little source of US Treasury, those dollars have already been sent directly from the, from the federal government, directly to, you know, to those metropolitan cities. So the, the NEUs, you can see funding kind of estimate, we, it's a little, you know, just kind of, that's all in process being, you know, you know, the dollars have been allocated to, to Michigan kind of Treasury. And then based on the, kind of the application flow, those funds should be flowing in. And that's why we have kind of Treasury, you know, meeting with, you know, the, all of the counties and kind of putting their presentation on Friday.
Okay, because these, these numbers, these numbers were determined months ago, right? This isn't that new, this is before ARPA was even passed. That these numbers, I heard about these numbers. Oh, go ahead.
Originally estimates, and so though these numbers have changed, not, not huge changes, but the original estimates that the National League of Cities came out with, they didn't take into account certain things like I, and how I, how population have been adjusted also to, some of these numbers are based off of, they were basing them off of what folks received through other federal programs, but they didn't take into consideration those smaller non-entitlement units that weren't receiving thing, weren't receiving or had certain federal programs. And so National, National League of City estimates, they were slightly off and it caused a little bit of an uproar originally, but now these numbers are closer to, true to what is actually going to happen, barring, you know, as, as Jeff mentioned, the elite system that the state opened up, requests several things from the non-entitlement unit. So Dunn's number, a point of contact, and also their operating budget. And there is a rule that the amount of money that the non-entitlement units can receive cannot exceed seventy-five percent of their operating budget. So barring kind of any of these numbers are a little bit more set in, in, in stone. But that is kind of why we're still kind of at the estimate portion and not kind of these, this is how much each non-entitlement unit will for sure receive from the state.
Okay, so on Friday, then, the commissioners will be able to see the formula that was used because there is huge discrepancies. I mean, when you look at the, the cities, so I'm really interested, like Commissioner Anderson, I've had many people ask me, you know, why my areas got what they did. So I will be looking forward to seeing what was, what the formula was for that.
Yeah, and you know, the state is, the state discretion was a kind of form that was offered by Treasury and guidelines, additional guidelines offered by Treasury. The state has a little bit of discretion and continues and will continue to exert, you know, actually written and people, the non-entitlement units actually receive their money. But hopefully on Friday, come Friday, we will be able to have that conversation and get, we have approached this, continue to approach that. But it's very good and, you know, definitely a good question to follow up with the state.
Okay, can I just address something real quick, Madam, Madam Commissioner? I think something, and, and Gabby, just so you know, there's a little bit of feedback in your connections. And, and so I just want you to know that, that, the, the, I think something that will help clear a little bit of this up is, you know, the metropolitan cities, it, it's not all that different from our, our HUD funding. You know, you all know that there are certain communities that get directly funding from HUD. It's usually communities for fifty thousand people or more. So Commissioner Baydum has Dearborn in his district and he knows that, you know, HUD gets, you know, works with Dearborn directly. For the non-entitlement communities like Allen Park or the others, you know, they work through our CDBG program HUD thing. And it's not all that different. I think something that the chair had mentioned, which I think is so significant, is the county is not the entity determining these numbers. Okay, there is a formula, there's a little bit of a discretion, certainly there's been different numbers out there, it's caused a lot of confusion. And so because of all of that, and, and because we have a good pulse on the confusion and the feedback from the community, we, we decided to invite Treasury to our Friday call so that they can help explain and clear it up. I don't want anybody thinking that the, the county determines these numbers. I don't want anybody thinking that, that on Friday, the county is going to be the only entity talking about how these numbers kind of came about. There's going to be, I'm sure, some folks that received less money than they expected. And so I just want to make sure that's very, very clear.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baydon?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think Khalil may have just answered my question. Is it fair, Khalil, to assume that the metropolitan cities on the left, those are the ones that have a population of fifty thousand or more and they receive federal HUD money directly? And the ones on the right side, the non-entitlement, those are all under fifty thousand in, in terms of population?
That's correct.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker McCormick.
And to, thank you, Madam Chair, to clarify, I just wanted to know, the city of Detroit, the monies that are allocated here, will this include additional funds that the city of Detroit is getting? Or is this a separate, separate dollars?
So the, you know, the city Detroit's getting over eight hundred and twenty-six million dollars in American Rescue Plan funds. They are also getting additional dollars as a part of the American Rescue Plan with other restrictions. For instance, they're getting housing dollars, is just one example. I don't know how much they're getting. But, you know, we're just talking about the American Rescue Plan today. Remember, this has got nothing to do, now we're at the American Rescue Plan portion of the presentation. We're not, the city Detroit did get CARES dollars last year and they got more than we did. And, and I can't tell you exactly how they spent it all, but we're, we're talking about a different set of funds right now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, any questions on this slide?
I just wanted to offer one more piece of, and I apologize if my internet is kind of going out. I've moved closer to the router with the hopes that that will address it. But I just wanted to just provide one more piece of clarification. So when we talk about the American Rescue Plan, inside of the American Rescue Plan, there are a number of different kind of funds that are available, different portions of money that are available. It's very, you know, long bill. Inside of that bill, there is specifically this reference to state and local fiscal recovery funds. And so when we talk about these dollars that are coming directly to Wayne County and then the dollars that are coming to your, the, the NEUs through the state, this is what we mean by the state and local fiscal recovery funds. Now, and under ARPA, there may be additional dollars available. For example, there was the Restaurant Revitalization Fund that was administered through the SBA. There is going to be additional dollars or maybe around affordable housing and schools. Those, that's kind of the larger ARPA, but what we will be focused on, you know, for the next couple of slides is the state and local fiscal recovery funds that the county and the NEUs received.
Thank you. Next slide.
Yeah, so thanks, everyone. So I'm Jeff Bankowski, Guide House's Michigan engagement partner. And what we wanted to do is really kind of start a, a little bit of the framing of, of, you know, we've already had some really great robust discussion about, around the American Rescue Plan. Slide sixteen, i- i- as a part of our stakeholder engagement sessions, Wayne County met with the state of Michigan and Dave Masser on the state budget director. And the state, what you see here is the state budget director provided the state's framework, which provide, you know, the, the county that we're leveraging with various kind of aspects with regards, regards to our methodology and prioritization. And so we, what we wanted to do was just kind of walk through some of, you know, the, the framework and the aspects of the lens that we're, that we're using as we're going to be kind of evaluating projects, the way kind of Khalil had to describe at the beginning. You know, obviously, the first one is, you know, the, with respect to eligibility is kind of pandemic. You know, how does the proposal address issues created or exacerbated by, you know, by, you know, by the, by the pandemic? Number two is equity. How does the, you know, the, the evaluation, you know, the proposal address changes and changes in societal opportunity, eliminate disparities and, and really improve outcomes for underserved and underrepresented populations? As Khalil said, and number three, you know, we really want these funds to be transfer, transformational. So what is the opportunity for transformational or social change to the county residents? As a, as a respect of where we're going to be allocating those dollars? As well as number four, leverage, you know, we know that we've, the county is, is receiving three hundred and thirty-nine. But there's also opportunity by combining these funds with private, public sector or your other philanthropic to make that, to make those three thirty-nine even, even higher. And, and so leverage is something that, you know, Khalil and the economic development team have, have already been kind of, you know, having those, those discussions. When, when, when we look at sustainability, and this is economic sustainability and not environmental, but a- as Khalil kind of said, these are one-time, these are one- these are one time, these are one time dollars. So the investments that we, that we will, you know, eventually kind of propose, um, will those require ongoing support and 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 expansion of the budget? And so, you know, those may, may be possible, but again, we have to really be kind of looking and realizing that they're one time funds and and really analyzing, you know, what's the potential return on, return on those investments? How do we increase the, the, the quality of life with, with the programs uh that we're gonna be, be looking at? And then when you kind of look at efficacy and im- implementation, we always want to make sure that the programs that we're gonna be looking at, uh, have they been validated? Are they data driven? Um, and you know, the uh, um, you know, ha- has evidence been proven that they, they will be successful? And and also too, you know, that we also know that the, these, these dollars are uh have, are time bound. And so are, 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 can we implement quickly? Uh, does the proposal, like, is it shovel ready and, you know, do we have that capacity to implement now? So what we wanted to do is just kind of talk a little bit about kind of the state's framework. And then from there, um, what we want to do is we're gonna then go into a discussion a little bit of just what, what are the states, some of their primary investments? As well as what the city is gonna be focusing on and then we're gonna deep dive to, to Wayne County in particular. So if we move to the next slide. So you can see that one of the, uh, the proposals that, that uh the governor um is going to be doing is implementing uh in a, a, a big investment to modernize parks. So you can see on the, on the slide here that, you know, that we've provided kind of a, a, a map of the, of the parks. Um, the State of Michigan is gonna be investing two hundred and fifty million uh to address infrastructure background, uh, modernizing state parks and recre- recreational areas as well as kind of, you know, focusing that, that, that aspect of kind of attracting tourism um specifically identified in the American Rescue, Rescue Plan uh eligibility requirements. Next slide. The governor has also created the Economic Jump Start Plan, you know, uh, essentially with a line of better jobs and bigger paychecks. So in June, uh, the governor announced uh three hundred million uh for wage increases and this would be basically uh supporting, encouraging businesses to cover the difference between uh current wages that, that, that end up, that, that a person has uh up to kind of fifteen dollars per hour and cover, covering that difference. Uh, the governor is also gonna be investing in higher education uh for workers as well as allocating over a hundred million and grants to small businesses, including a twenty five million dollar set aside for uh, for, for, for startups. And then you can see there at the, at the bottom too, a, a large commitment, three hundred and seventy million towards child care costs for working parents, parents basically being able to get uh, ensure that over a hundred and fifty thousand families have provide, uh, have access to uh safe, quality cha- child, childcare and so that we can continue to move our economy uh back to pre pandemic levels. Next slide. One of the, also one of the largest proposals that, that the, the governor is gonna be doing is, is around ex- expanding uh the great, uh, the Great Start Readiness Program. So this is basically a plan to, to fund preschool education and have access to high quality uh affordy, affordable early education. It ba- uh, essentially it ensures that all eligible four year olds will have uh early education oppor- opportunities to prepare for, prepare for success. And that is, you know, being rolled out statewide. So the, uh, you know, as we indicated, so there's a, a variety of different things that are happening at the state level and as you guys, as we've already kind of walked through, there's uh eight hundred and twenty six million uh that, that is coming to the city Detroit. And uh Detroit has gone through its own uh survey uh and some stakeholder results. And so we thought that that, you know, is kind of important here to kind of highlight. And you can see that those results, uh, you know, they're categories from highest to lowest. You can see the, you know, the focus in Detroit is gonna be about, around rebuilding neighborhoods, fighting intergenerational poverty. Uh, and then uh focus on improving public sa- public safety and then small business growth and, and, and resolving the digital, digital divide. And finally, if you move to the next slide, I think this, you know, the uh, this kind of gives you a little bit of the, of the lens. You can see over on the left hand side. Uh, as we kind of said, these are all of the eligible uses. You can see supporting health response, negative economic impacts, premium pay. Uh, we already had, had a large discussion here around revenue loss and then investment in infrastructure. And you can see how, see how uh it's being mapped to kind of Detroit's priorities as we, as we discussed.
Jeff, hold on one second. Commissioner Moretti has a question.
Sure.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Jeff, you had talked about before you started this um part of the presentation about economics, uh sustainability. And so, uh, do you know what the plan, like, if the governor's plan is to give three hundred million dollars in wage increases, that is a finite number. What's gonna happen when that number is not there anymore? Do they have thoughts about that?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. The way that they're trying, they're, the, the, and again, a lot of, you know, the where the state isn't completely through the, the entire kind of budget process, you know, the, so they're, the, but, but essentially going in and giving uh conceptually three month grants. So the, you know, the state will give a, a business entity uh for it to increase kind of payroll for certain eligible people, uh, you know, uh, employees up to that fifteen, uh, that fifteen dollars. Um, and as long as the, uh, you know, the business guarantees for up to an at least additional three months that the business, you know, the, the business keeps those, those wages going forward. Um, you know, the, uh, you know, the, uh, the state would give a, a three month supplemental payment.
Okay, thank you.
Right. So uh with no other questions, I'll flip it over to Gabby so we can talk through a little bit, uh, you know, the, the lens that we're working through within Wayne County.
Thank you. Uh, we can go on to the next slide. Um, so I wanted to first give uh commission, understanding of what we've taken on so far. Um, we want to show that this has been a collaborative process and that we can, want to continue that collaboration as we're trying to understand um and document the best approach for how to spend this money. So as you can see, uh, we've had um over sixty stakeholder meetings uh with over um a hundred individuals talking about how best, uh, what, how communities were affected, what folks need um after uh the pandemic and kind of while we're still in the midst of it as well. And so um I just wanted to kind of talk through these, you know, very briefly. Um, so you know, we've had the pleasure of uh talking with commission um about, I, you know, what ARPA is, what the guidelines are so far. Uh, we've been able to have those uh discussions um expanded as well to uh municipals and we were able to actually include a lot of commissioners in these discussions, which I think um were very beneficial um and provided a lot of guidance and also reassurance. Um, knowing that the county has, I know, spent the CRF dollars uh from last, you know, from last year. Um, and knowing that we can provide the guidance to folks um in the coming years to feel confident that they will be able to, I, you know, really do the correct reporting, make sure that they're spending things uh that are eligible. Um, these meetings have really been able to help with that and also capture what municipalities really care about as well. Um, and then to um several meetings uh with uh colleges, community colleges and of course, uh, the round tables, which a lot of the commissioners have participated in as well. Uh, we've been able to kind of go over um the importance of what ARPA is and uh share with people kind of what we know at this point. As you all know, guidance is still being finalized. We are still kind of in the interim rule of everything and the comment section, uh, the comments for uh the interim rule just ended uh very recently. Um, so we are kind of in a point now where I, we have submitted a number of questions as Guide House on behalf of the county and we have uh the municipalities that we heard and they are kind of going through all of those and making sure that the final rule is reflective of the things that they heard um were most important from, from the different entities.
Can I just say something real quick, Gabby, on that? Can you go back one slide? Um, you know, it does say in here that there's about, you know, sixty total meetings and I know it says over a hundred individuals, but um, you know, many of these meetings will oftentimes have more than one individual, one entity. And then in fact, I, I bet you if I had to say every single one of these meetings had more than one person in them, I, I'm pretty sure that'd be accurate. I mean, just by way of example, on our Friday round table meetings, uh, we never have less than fifty people at a meeting. And you can see we've had nine of those uh where we've discussed this issue. Um, and I want to thank, you know, certain members of the commission, some of them, uh, some of you are diehards on that Friday call and I can't thank you all enough. Madam Chair, I see you on there frequently, but Commissioner Moretti, Dob and others, you know, uh, some, some of you all show up religiously on that. And if you haven't shown up or if you're, you know, if you haven't been there for a while, please try to make it this Fridays. I think you'll find the information valuable. Um, and I think, you know, as this continues, we're gonna be continuing, you know, this kind of information out there. But when it says here, we're meeting with community colleges, we meet with all three community colleges together. When it says, you know, business stakeholders, you can imagine the fair amount of folks from the business community or philanthropic partners or so on and so forth. So um, I would say this has been as intense of an outreach effort as maybe I've ever been a part of.
Thank you, yes. We can go on to the next slide. So what did we hear from those uh meetings and those stakeholders engagement? And so these are a couple of common themes uh that we heard, what people care about, where we are right now in the county and how best to move forward uh when we're thinking about what the future of the county and its municipalities are. And so um a couple of the things that, you know, we've been hearing around economic recovery, of course, workforce development. And so kind of just, these are the common themes that people are kind of most passionate about. Understand that there's gonna be a need for a lot of investment, um, and ongoing investment. Um, and we think that by kind of highlighting these common themes, um, showing what they are, we can start to use this as a little bit of a framework to understand where are the overlaps? Where can we get uh additional dollars? Where can we think about nonprofits and private partners that are also interested in uh pursuing these uh themes? Um, and doing it in the way that uh the county is interested in and its municipalities and its stakeholders are interested in. And the, when I say that, I'm referencing kind of the four words that are in the larger circle, which is yes, we want to do workforce development. Yes, we want to do economic recovery. We want to do infrastructure. We want to do housing. But we want to do it with um an, an eye towards and thought around how to make sure uh they are uh including uh diversity, equitable inclusion and accessible methods of accomplishing these goals. So we don't want to just do any, any economic recovery. We want to do economic recovery that is reflective of the diversity that we have here in the county. Um, that's equitable among its stakeholders, um, and that's inclusive to, to all. And so we, uh, you know, with working with the county, uh, this guide house and uh working with the different departments, we are always thinking about how to build programs that include those uh four kind of principles, those kind of four guiding lights um at the core of all of our, our program creation. So, um, we've also taken the time to uh really think through what, what's important. Where have we, you know, what have we been able to kind of quantify and document? So uh the commission uh offered us a number of kind of written goals. I, and kind of things that you guys are holding up as most important. We want you to know that these, of, of course, have been at in all of our conversations, thinking about these high priorities and the priorities that you all have listed. Um, as you can see, uh, there are a number of high priorities, um, all of them kind of ranging from, you know, house improvement and road and uh bridge investments and infrastructure. Um, and the numbers below each of those kind of categories is representative of the number of projects or initiatives that have been listed that kind of fall into those categories. And so as we're having these discussions, we're always kind of keeping this in mind. We're trying to understand how, you know, what the municipalities are telling us, where the county goals are, how we're able to kind of fit these into these kind of high priority items that are listed. Earlier on, I know that we had uh just a very brief discussion about the importance of, uh, you know, giving, uh, uh, increasing wages and what that might mean and how we can think about that in a um thoughtful way. Uh, and so we definitely documented that as a priority. We know that the priority that you guys are trying to capture is not just, of course, you know, taking care of your people, but also the importance of retaining and attracting the best talent. So I'm gonna let Khalil talk a little bit more about kind of our thoughts there uh too.
Yeah, thank you, Gabby. I think, you know, I have had a lot of very fruitful discussions with uh several commissioners, particularly Madam Chair uh about the idea of pandemic pay and it is something that the county executive is supportive of. Um, you know, we want to be thorough and thoughtful for sure and we're certainly monitoring what a lot of other places are, are doing. Um, just by way of example, you know, during the CARES Act, uh, the state came out with a program that we were able to utilize for our own employees. And so we're always searching and monitoring for those types of opportunities. That being said, you know, it is our hope with the great work of Janelle Allen that we will have something to put before the commission within the next thirty days. Um, and that, that's our sincere hope. Uh, and for more on that, I think we can, you know, um, answer any questions anybody has. And I think Janelle is either on here or, or we can have follow up conversations, but that's our hope is to have something before you all in the next three days.
Thank you, because that's been a very um important topic to many commissioners, as I know it's been important to the administration as well. Making sure that our dedicated, hardworking employees are compensated um for those who had to come to work during the pandemic, that pandemic pay is going to be so very important. And you know, um, we've received phone calls and emails, public comments over the last few months. So are you telling me that you all will have a plan and dispersment will be made within thirty days? Because that's what I need to hear.
Yeah, with dispersment's always a little tricky, so bear with us and be patient with us, but we do hope to have a plan in front of you in the next thirty days.
Okay, and I'm going to um really emphasize that dispersment should be also part of that next thirty day plan, only because our employees, as you know, have been working so very hard. Just need to show their appreciation and, and we have the money. So um I will be following up with you on this as I have been for the last several weeks to make sure that that takes place in a very, very timely manner.
Yes, ma'am.
Question, Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to clarify, when you disperse the funds, will it be in a emergency manner or will this uh go through the, the, the regular process?
Yeah, no, I think the, the plan is to put it in front of the commission in the regular process. In fact, yeah. Regular probably is not a way of saying it if we want to do it as fast as we can, but, but as fast as we can regularly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kaling?
Are we ready to do the question now, Madam Chair?
Well, I see that you have a question about the uh ARPA dispersment.
Yeah, I wanted to, and I appreciate, Madam Chair. I absolutely have to leave at twelve twenty-five, so I appreciate coming in. Uh, I wanted to follow up on the local dispersments. Uh, have we notified all of our local communities, uh, what the statutory formula or any other factors for calculating their ARPA dispersments uh to their community? So they know where that number came from and how it was calculated?
That's actually later in the presentation.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna be here, did we? Yeah.
We've gone through almost all of them. I think I'm meeting with you on Friday. And I, I, I want to say that it is either the last one or one of the last ones, but they attend our Friday meetings when we talk about this.
Okay, so they all know how it was calculated?
I, I think there's still a lot of questions about how it was calculated. That's a different question. The number of people we've notified them and that's why we're having a meeting on Friday.
I'm going discussions, that's good. Uh, and I'll just put my other question back out there, Mr. Rahal. Uh, cause I may not be here by the time
Sure.
it comes to an answer. But I looked at the first three uh priorities from the State Budget Office on that slide and public health hits all three of those. Uh, so my question then is gonna be, what investment have we made in public health? What investment do we plan on making in public health uh for a more public health? Uh, a more robust public health system in Wayne County? And the sub question under that is uh specifically to deal with the disparities in healthcare. Uh, so if you need to go through the rest of your um, uh, your presentation now, uh, I'll leave those questions out there to be answered at the end. Uh, thank you.
Well, I'll try to give you as best as of answers I can give you now. Certainly, um, you know, disparities in healthcare exists, recognize that amplified during the pandemic, there's no question about it. Certainly, that is something that hits the categories of the broad strokes that we're looking at when we're talking about diversity, equity, inclusion. that we're looking at when we're talking about diversity, equity, inclusion and the like. You know, we do not have, at the end of this presentation, you are not going to see a list of items that we are going to fund at certain levels. We're not there yet. And, and our hope is, is to be able to do that sometime in the fall. We're conducting our outreach as much as we can. What we're doing right now is reporting to you what we have heard from people and, and, and the themes in which we're trying to address things.
Well, I'm asking now, Mr. Rahal, because I don't want a list to come out later that says, oh, this is what we're spending on. I want the thinking and to go into it now, how we're going to respond to that. Because I think both a more robust public health system, including dealing with the disparities in care, are an absolute must coming out of this. And so I wanted in the conversation now that we're considering and coming up with ways to deal with that issue as a part of our overall response. So I, I didn't want to wait till I got a list later and go, whoa, 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 wait a minute, where, where's this? Where's that? I'm putting it in now. So that's good for now, Mr. Rahal, but thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. If you continue. Gabby, you're on mute.
Thank you. We can go on to the next slide. So like Khalil mentioned, we have been meeting with municipalities, like I mentioned before as well. A lot of the commissioners have been a part of those meetings. We do have some additional meetings upcoming. So we met with Wayne. Wayne has requested an additional meeting that we're going to be hosting today later. And then we have a meeting scheduled with Dearborn as well for this Friday. That will be an in-person meeting where we'll get to hear a little bit about their priorities. And, you know, what this, I do want to emphasize, this presentation reflects the priorities we've heard from, you know, the municipalities as, as directly as we can. And so what we're going to kind of show you a little bit later is kind of those direct priorities that have been documented and kind of approved by the municipalities based off of these discussions. If we go on to the next slide. So from these municipalities, like I mentioned, a lot of focus on water and sewer infrastructure. That's been of very high interest. Also kind of more moderate interest, a lot of economic live, work, play aspects. How do we make our communities attractive to people? And then kind of a little bit lower down as far as kind of the amount of interest that we've gotten. It's been a lot around, I kind of, emergency vehicles or broadband. All of these things definitely from, you know, our current understanding of ARPA fall within reasonable and eligible expenditures for $4. So as municipalities are kind of thinking through this and thinking about what's eligible, we want to, you know, inform them that yes, these things are. But then also the way that we're capturing this is we're trying to bridge the gap between different municipalities, right? And so knowing that, you know, things done in Dearborn and Dearborn Heights, they're not just going to necessarily stay based off of kind of municipal lines. They're going to bleed into one another. And in order to kind of make them, to give folks the chance to get the most bang for their buck, we are encouraging these conversations at the county level. And then also too, sharing what we, what we've heard. And so as we think about water and sewer infrastructure, that's a really great example of where it might be helpful to team up. You know, a lot of the commissioners know based off of the dollars from the NEUs in the metropolitan, that there are a lot of projects that need to get done. And the amount of money that we have is not unlimited. And so with that in mind, we're trying to really prioritize, really capture what is of most importance and how can we provide ourselves a good foundation as we think about how to use these dollars. Do you see a hand up from one of the commissioners?
Thank you. I wanted to know if there was some thought in how each commissioner can be more involved in the decision-making process and even the ability to have a certain amount of funds appropriated to each district? Because we are the boots on the ground and we understand more so what are the needs in our community? So I'm not really sure how that can be done or if there were any thoughts about how each commissioner district could get allocated a certain amount and then look at how we would like to use it in, in, in a way that is appropriate.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. We will absolutely take that under advisement. This isn't the only conversation we're going to be having about the American Rescue Plan dollars. You can see the intense outreach that we're having. Certainly commissioners are a big part of that. And so we'll absolutely look forward to having that discussion with you.
And would that be on Friday? Or when, when are you saying that that discussion would take place?
Well, this Friday, the Friday meeting we keep referencing actually is sort of very specific to the guest speakers we have regarding the Department of Treasury to let those NEU communities know why they're getting sort of what they're getting. But I'm happy to follow up with you and schedule a meeting.
Thank you. I would like that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We can go on to the next slide. Is there are no more questions? Okay, let's go on. So like I mentioned before, we have directly taken the priorities from the municipalities, what we've heard, kind of going directly to them, understanding. And, you know, they were able to submit this both through kind of a written format and directly in the conversations that we've had with different municipalities. We captured those, we grouped them. A number of municipalities were interested in parks. You can kind of see directly kind of what they were referencing and what types of things that they would like to see on this kind of slide. So really, we went through kind of a whiteboarding session where we were able to put together all the municipalities, understand where common goals are. And then, you know, our hope is to, again, amplify these dollars. We don't want it just to be, you know, $339 million for the county and, you know, a million dollars here for, for this municipality and, you know, $200,000 here. We want this to be a collaborative and multiplicative process in which we're able to encourage private and nonprofit funders to also kind of take stock of the things that these municipalities are saying are most important to them. We can go on to the next slide. So again, you know, water and sewer infrastructure, very similar, a high level of kind of what those projects are and how important they are, just based off of kind of raw numbers. We move on from here. To the next slide. Yep, great. Road and repair, road repair, maintenance and expansion. Again, these are things that don't just happen in one community, right? And so we have to be thinking about how we can be collaborative, combine efforts. If this, if this is the way that we want to pursue. At the end of the day, the county is not able to tell the municipalities how to spend their dollars. But what we can do, encouraging municipalities to kind of take stock of this. Let's be thoughtful. Let's take our time and get discussions across the communities so that nothing is siloed and that we're having this in a really productive way that's going to be of most use to the communities. We don't want one person, one municipality focusing all on parts and then the next one focusing all on roads. We want there to be a lot of collaboration. And we can move on to the next slide. So along with the municipalities, we have a number of other stakeholders throughout Wayne County. And that includes our business, our businesses. And so we talked with over, and access talks to over 2,000 businesses inside of Wayne County to understand what they care most about. So as we're thinking as a county, what are our larger kind of transformative goals? Things that, you know, we might care about is being a business-friendly county, making sure that we can attract businesses. And this is what we heard from the business community as far as things that they would like to see happen in the future. And now some of these things may be more directly tie into ARPA, some of them don't. But they are things that are definitely high as far as importance to the business community. And a couple of those kind of include things that, some of things that we've already been doing. So providing grants, you know, providing technical assistance in some cases. I do really do believe that the county's leadership in providing small business grants to businesses throughout the county better helped those businesses apply for the restaurant revitalization that we saw SBA do kind of in the earlier part of this year, that they were already prepared because they had gone through the process with us. And a lot of times, the county was holding their hands and helping them understand which documents were necessary in order for a successful application. So these are a couple of those different items that the business community listed. And then what are the next steps? So as I mentioned, the comment period for the interim final rule around spending for the state and local fiscal recovery funds has ended. And now we're moving on to kind of the first, the first bits of what reporting might look like. And so reporting period is going to end July 31st. As Khalil has emphasized about this kind of discussion, we have not spent any money. But we are kind of continuing to develop a plan, develop an approach. And I want to say that I, and maybe Khalil can, will talk a little bit more about this as well. But I, the approach of kind of waiting and making this a collaborative, transformative effort has really been applauded by a lot of different organizations. And I'll let Khalil talk a little bit more about that. And I'll just kind of give a brief overview of what are the other deadlines that we're keeping in mind and making sure that we're going to be on top of so that, you know, we are kind of in compliance with federal guidance. That includes, you know, the end of August deadline with, you know, spending and in an approach to spending for August 31st, concluding, you know, any additional outreach to municipalities. We want to make sure that we have an understanding, a very solid understanding what municipalities care about. And then to, according, according to a lot of reports that we're getting, there is a hope that Congress is going to be passing a very large infrastructure bill. And so that's all, you know, that's all in the news today. And, you know, has been for the last couple of weeks. But we're starting to see a large infrastructure legislation. And we want you all to know that as we're having these conversations and making plans, that we're taking the entire ecosystem into account. We're not just thinking about these dollars in the silo. We're thinking about other federal legislation that we're seeing, other programs that might affect and how we might think about spending with that respect. And I'm going to hand it over to Khalil to kind of just, you know, add any of his additional thoughts.
Yeah, thank you, Gabby. Look, I know that there's a lot of people asking, when are we going to start spending these monies? And what are we going to start spending it on? And a couple of things I would say is, you know, one, we're absolutely being patient and strategic of how we do this because we feel like it's that important to get this right. We know that the interim rules are out. We know there's going to be more rules to come out. We don't want to miss those opportunities. We know there's going to be other legislation that's going to come out. As Gabby mentioned, we don't want to miss that as an opportunity. We know the state got $6.5 billion. We know every municipality in Wayne County and school districts and other places got money. Not everybody has the capacity to figure out how to spend these funds. And so as an extra level of service, you know, free service, we're not asking for anything there. But we're offering our consulting services and our attorneys and our expertise of how we spend the CARES dollars to the other 42 communities in Wayne County who maybe didn't have a chance to go through this last year. Obviously, the city authority has the ability, where with all, they've gone through it before. And so, you know, one of the reasons why we're being very purposely strategic on this is because, you know, we know that, you know, folks, you know, are going through this for the very first time. Everybody's got major issues that we can collectively solve together. And we're waiting for more state programs to come out and all the like. So that's the reason for the prudency. It's certainly not because we haven't been doing anything. You can see from the presentation, you know, our outreach process has been incredibly intense. We've gathered a lot of good, fascinating information. We're going to go through it all. We're going to continue this outreach. And our hope is, is that by the fall, we'll be able to come back to the county commission with a detailed plan that we'll work together on and hopefully, you know, come to you all with some approval processes. So that's the timeline, I think, going forward. Madam Chair, we'll, we'll take any questions anybody has.
All right. Thank you for that detailed presentation. A lot of information historically where we've been and where we intend to go forward. We've asked questions throughout the presentation, but are there any questions that did not get asked? Now's the time to ask any commissioners that have questions now? Don't see any hands. Any questions on the presentation? And because this is so important, a couple of things, we'll continue to meet. I've been meeting with the administration. I'll continue to meet with the administration, implementing and making sure that they're aware of the things that we want to implement going forward with the ARPA dollars. And I hope that we'll have another presentation similar to this. I'm going to shoot for early September just to see what's happened from now until that time. And then as Khalil indicated, sometime later in the fall, they hope to have a presentation to us as to how the funds are intended to be spent. But again, we will have continual input into that process as it goes along. Any questions? I see. Hand Commissioner Varga.
Thank you very much. I publicly want to acknowledge and thank everyone for working together so well. Khalil, your team, the executive, the commission, but mostly for all the outreach that has been occurring all through this process. I think it's really important to acknowledge that our locals are better equipped to handle all of this because of your leadership, Khalil. And I'm so glad that you were, we were recognized, but your efforts was recognized with the award. My voice is going in and out. But I, I really think that the ongoing communications will serve us all well because we all have so many common issues and projects that we're going to be able to do in the future and to organize it all into one place. But most of all, I think all communities are beginning to talk to each other because we are on Zoom. It's so much easier to all come together like on a Friday afternoon. So I just want to give you all the accolades that's due to you for all the hard work that you have done past and looking forward to the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And you as well, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate those words. Commissioner Anderson?
We don't, we don't give enough kudos to people while we're living.
I know, and we need to do that more often, actually. Get your flowers while you can smell them. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, I'll add my appreciation and thanks to Khalil. Just wanted to ask a very quick question. I know there's been a lot mentioned about infrastructure expenditures. And do we, Khalil, have we sort of not given up? I shouldn't say given up, but have we decided that we're not going to wait for that bill to go through? The one that's been submitted to Congress for infrastructure? And go ahead and use some of this money? Or is that something you're still, depending on what happens over the rest of the summer, will be addressing?
That's a great question because it ties into the strategy that we keep talking about, right? I think the one thing that we have learned is there's never anything wrong with obtaining information and seeing how the bills lay themselves out. So we're, we're upfronting, you know, the gathering of all that information for sure. The other thing is if you've been following the discussions, you know, be quite fearful that maybe they're not going to pass a bill with as much resources as we would like. And so because of that, we know we have more infrastructure needs than there will be money. And so I think the, the way we're thinking about it now is let's work with local communities. Let's find out. Let's find out what the infrastructure priorities are. Let's outline those things, see what's eligible. Again, we anticipate, and it's just an anticipation, we all know this could change. But if, if Congress passes a bill in late August, which is what multiple reports have, have said, we're still in a timeframe of that sort of fall deadline of what we're hoping to present to you all.
Well, I, I think it had been mentioned earlier, maybe not today, but I think it has been mentioned many times that we have until 25 to spend the money from the ARP, the ARP dollars. And so I think it's a wise strategy, what you're saying, that at least we have the projects identified and ready. How many times have we in the past seen legislation go through? And it's, you got a shovel ready project, you know? And at least we're down that direction when, when, when and if that infrastructure bill gets passed. And so I think it's a good, a good move. And so, but I guess what we need to do is, and I, I didn't see a lot of those outlined, the other projects other than, well, I did see some. But so hopefully we can keep working on those with the local communities and get those ready to, as we move along. But like you said, or in, like I understand that we have until 25 to expend that money. But I, I know communities are needing things done now and partnering with them, I think, is a, is a wise strategy too. But anyway, that's all I have. I would like to talk to you offline later about a different question. So if you could, if you're free this afternoon, I'll, I'll give you a call.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions from commissioners on the presentation of the ARPA funds? Any other questions at this time? And again, I know Khalil and his team will be available for questions, comments every day as we have and think of questions to, to be addressed by the ARPA funds. One more time for commissioners for any questions. Okay, I do see a hand from an urban, and I believe that's someone from the public. So at this time, I will take just the two public comments on the presentation before we go on to a brief update on the flood recovery efforts. Mr. Urban?
Yes, I just want to say I was very glad that I came. This is my first time coming to the meeting and you all have enlightening my heart. I'm a resident of Harper Woods and I really appreciate all the information that I've heard from you all. And it's been a blessing to my ears. So it enlightened me on where we are with what you all have discussed today. And I just want to say thank you all.
Thank you for joining us today. And this recording of this meeting will be on our website as well. So, but thank you for joining us. Appreciate you.
You're welcome. God bless you.
God bless you as well. Okay, we've had Director Sturdivant and Director Watts have been on the phone patiently waiting. But I'll do this correctly, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number two is a discussion with the Director of Public Services, Beverly Watts, and the Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, Dariel Sturdivant, on flood recovery efforts.
Okay, and again, thank you Gabby, Jeff, Philip, and Khalil on your previous presentation. If you need to zoom off, I understand. But thank you all for the detail and the information that you share with us. We'll be in contact for sure.
Thank you.
Director Watts, Director Sturdivant, yours.
Yes, I'll go first. I was going to say good morning, but good afternoon, everyone. We're the, we're the afternoon now and, and I'll be a little, a little bit brief. I know Ted will go more in depth as his efforts working with team by the flood recovery. I want to update, you know, you met up chair in the entire commission on the DPS efforts. As everyone know, last Friday, of course, we had continuously more rainfall that failed in an exorbitant amount of time. Very short time. I continue to be proud of our DPS roads team. Our roads team continued to be proactive with the drains and trying to clear things out in anticipation of the flood, you know, the water rain that was coming on Friday. Things kind of worked according to the infrastructure we have in place right now. We, we continue to have problems with some of the pump stations because of course, the infrastructure was built for 50, 70 years ago. I'm still here to say we are in the process of upgrading all of our 71, 40, 41, I mean, 41 pump stations in a seven-year period. That's our plan. We have three of them now that we're going to be upgrading. We have a design that'll be completed probably next month and they'll immediately go out for bid for a construction contractor. And we anticipate beginning that construction on the three priority ones before the end of the year and completing in 2022. Commissioner Baydun, I know you'll be glad to hear that the pump station 111 in Dearborn is definitely one that's going to be in the first round that we'll be upgrading. Because that one, of course, the water failed a lot on Friday. Again, the road flooded because ours, our equipment right now is tapped with standard, you know, industry standards to receive about 1.8 inches of water flow per hour. As everyone know, we received beyond two inches of water per hour. So that will, you know, increase the efforts or the chances of the water getting onto the road. But I want to thank you, Commissioner Baydun, who was out there with our crews Friday. Our crews got in action immediately, you know, went there, assisted pumping the water out to assist the, the pump station. No power was lost to it. The pump station operated as it should. It's just a amount of rainfall that fell within an hour of time. So our crews did what they're supposed to do within hours, some hours, then we got the water off of the road. But again, those are the efforts that DPS did. We will continue to be proactive. We will continue to assist our pump stations, especially the ones that are in critical condition until we're able to go through all the upgrades for our pump stations and, you know, help the infrastructure. Having said that though, even when we do the upgrades, like everyone across the state, you know, mother nature is always going to guide. You know, we can have a pump station that accepts seven inches of water in an hour and then mother nature might take it up to 10 inches and may fall within that hour. But we will still continue to do our part. Another issue is to let you know that myself, along with Homeland Security, we have become a part of this focus group that the state has organized. And the first meeting was last Monday. This is where all of the regional stakeholders are beginning to meet and dialogue as we also improve and have plans for our infrastructure in our areas like our county. Everyone is doing it together and looking at it as a regional level for the state. So DPS is proud to be a part of that committee to have that discussion with M. Gleewa, everyone else, you know, as far as how we regionalize our infrastructure to help tackle the climate that's ever changing. So again, that's our update. I'll keep you, everyone updated as we have, you know, these storms coming because in a minute, we're going to get into snow season. You know, believe it or not, we're going to transition to that. But we are committed to upgrading our roadway pump stations and even our sewer systems as best we can. We look forward to dollars that are coming. I'm so glad to have this conversation about funding that's coming as it relates to infrastructure because we are not short on projects at all. What we are short on is funding, so we will be welcoming any dollars that come our way because we definitely have a plan and we have the projects identified. So with that, Madam Chair, that concludes my presentation on the update on flood recovery. And I guess Mr. Ted, Dariel Sturdivant, is ready to give his efforts and everything he and his team has been working on.
Thank you, Director Watts and your team for all that you do. I know we have had these, these unprecedented rainstorms that is really pulling on all of us. But thank you for what you all have been able to do and continue to do. We do have a question from Commissioner Baydun.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director Watts and all of your crew for stepping up on Friday as soon as it started raining. I was out there with the Chief of Staff, Asar Turfi, and Sam, Sam Jafer was there also. Thank you Ted and the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for also stepping up during these last two floods. What I would like to ask you, Beverly, I remember this pump station at Greenfield, south of Michigan Avenue. As a matter of fact, this is a historical perspective, Beverly. July 16, 1980, I was still in high school and they called it back then the green storm where the, the sky turned green and that bridge, that road flooded all the way to the top of the bridge 40 years ago exactly last Friday. And how ironic that it happened again on Friday. You mentioned that, that pump station, I don't know if this is the only one that's designed to take in 1 point inches of, of rain per hour? Are all the pump stations designed the same way?
Absolutely. It varies, but basically none of them exceed 2 inches per hour. So yes, it's going to be 1.8 inches or less. That's the way they were designed.
So now with the new design and with the change, you know, with the warmer weather, you know, the climate change, what will these new pumps be able to take? And in terms of rainwater, like four inches per hour, five inches per hour?
Through the chair, we're looking at now the upgrades, the capacity and what they're being designed to do now is going to be anywhere from three to five inches of water flow per hour.
That's, that's good. Now, we'll, we'll, I, I, I'm assuming that none of the 41 pumps in Wayne County today have any backup generators, right?
No, not now. We have to go there. And that's the beauty of the upgrades that we're doing. And I'm glad you asked the question because now with the upgrades, a generator is being designed. They will be built in the pump station and also they will be connected to what we call a SCADA system. So it's going to do two things. Whenever a pump station, once we upgrade it, loses power, it's automatically going to trip over and kick on that generator. And then we are also going to get a notification remotely letting us know that action has occurred, letting us know a notification that power has been lost at that pump station. However, the generator has been kicked on immediately and then we'll get a notification.
Okay, so immediately in the near future, you mentioned that there are three pumps which will be replaced and Greenfield and Dearborn is one of them. Steve Shea and I visited Wyoming last year when we had a major rainfall. I, I'm sure Steve is on the line.
Yes.
At the time, he told me that that pocket in that area might need also a pump station because we went there on Friday also and we couldn't do anything because that was city-owned problem, so to speak. It was Way, it was Wyoming, but we don't, we don't have a pump station over there. And, and Steve told me that eventually in the future, that's what this area needs is another pump station in that area.
Okay, is that a question?
That's a question, yeah.
Well, I'm sure if we could put a pump station on every other block, we could. And Steve is probably correct. And that's what we come with the collaboration. You know, we're working with our consultant as well, you know, working on our 10-year asset management plan. And we will look at and do a quick overview of all the infrastructure, infrastructure needs, especially with new development and everything with our local communities. And so that, that is a focus of ours as well. But right now, that priority focus is the 41 existing pump stations that's antiquated, that they still work, but they're just not, you know, for these times, we're trying to update and upgrade those 41 stations right now. But again, we are looking at areas to your point, whereas now that, you know, the areas that Wayne County controls because certain areas we did not, but we will look at all of those areas when we looking at the big picture. So you're absolutely right and Steve is correct as well. So we will be doing that.
Is it a fair assumption that this pump station in Dearborn would be completed by the end of the year or no?
Now this year is going to be started because right now the design for all three should be completed probably next month. And then we immediately going to put it off a bid for a contractor to go ahead and do the upgrades. And that's going to, you know, take a little time. We will be probably requesting, you know, some kind of expedited approval for those three. And then they can begin the upgrade process this year and then finishing up next year. They can work through the winter for that. So it's not like they have to stop and wait and come back in the spring. And that's the beauty of those upgrades.
Beverly, just to guess them, and I'm just, you know, I'm for our curiosity. Would you say on average, and I know it depends, would be, would cost about 40 to 50 million for each pump station?
I wouldn't say 40 to 50 million for each. No, 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 not for each. 40, you say 40 to 50 million per pump station?
Yeah, I mean, so I, I don't know where I heard this before, the, the amount. Any idea how much a pump station would cost roughly?
Yeah, for the upgrades that we're trying to do right now, just for the task, if we were looking at upgrading all of our 41 pump stations, which we are over a seven-year period, if I could come and have, I'd say anywhere between 65 to 70 million. And that would be for the totality of all the 41 pump stations, yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you for, for answering my questions and thank you for everything that you're doing, Beverly, with your staff. Thank you.
Thank you so, so much. And if you have any questions, feel free to just reach out to myself or Andy or Steve Shea. We'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Couple more questions for you, Director Watts, Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Watts, I appreciate you being here on the call and what you're doing. I, I think it's, it's always a moving target with what we're hearing about the expectation about with rainfall. I realize the dilemma that, that we're facing with the additional water, the torrential rains that we're likely to be continuing to get. I just wondered if you would be able to share with us at some point the next round of those in, in the schedule, I guess, for all seven? I believe you said there were seven.
Yes, it's 41 total pump stations. And we, we hope to, we put our plan in trying to say we would hope to have all of them upgraded, not beyond a seven-year period. Now, having said that, I would like to get them done if we can, you know, expeditiously. So when I hear like infrastructure money coming, all of that, that will shorten the time. That's just our plan and timeline. If we work with the budget that we have right now, it would take us seven years. However, if we're getting extra funding for infrastructure, that's going to shorten their seven-year time for those 41 pump stations to be upgraded.
And you're, you're actually looking at them based on the greatest amount of need, based on the most recent flooding and.
Absolutely.
I, I think it's great that we're going to have, and hopefully all of them will be upgraded where we'll have the generators on, within that pump station.
Yes.
And it'll, I think it'll save the number of, the amount of work it takes to transport generators and.
Yes.
And, and, and it, and should not, not have any lapse time where the flooding or the water can start backing up and, and.
Absolutely. And you're hit it, you know, you, you, you're directly correct, Commissioner Anderson. That's what we want to do. We want to make ourselves more efficient and we want to better utilize our resources. So imagine if we have to bring a generator that we have. Imagine the cost you'd have to do to get 41 generators for pump stations. And then you have to have a crew. You have to have a electrician or a plumber to take it there and hook it up. Imagine how we could be more efficient. We would don't have to do any of that. Though the crews can be doing other tasks. So to your point, it's going to make us more efficient and it's going to immediately make us have the service better and minimize that water overflowing to the road quicker. Because if we lose, lose power, it's going to kick on to the generator and then we're going to get a notification. So it's just really a win-win. And to your question, we definitely will let you know the next round of pump stations because we're doing worse first. We've got prioritizing all of them based upon the condition they're in right now. So we'll be more than happy to release that list of schedules of pump stations.
Just, you know, just a suggestion or for thought. If it's possible to do it, I, I would even look for a higher number on, on the amount of water we might anticipate. A lot of the things that I've heard is that it will, it could possibly quadruple in, in a matter of, within the next 10 years. If we don't turn the tide on, on the, the way the climate is changing. And even, even deniers, I think, that are out there have to look at results of what we're seeing in our weather right now. And I, I think shooting higher rather than shooting at what we got most recently even higher if, since we're having it done and if we're buying those generators and everything, let's, let's anticipate those higher.
Yes, but yeah. Yes, Commissioner, you must have been in our Zoom meetings because we were saying exactly that because right now, the design process was already in the works for the three pump station upgrades. But we were saying that now, we don't want to just go now, we see more occurrences are coming where the rainfall is exceeding. We're going to exceed it now. So when we do the future pump station, the remainder, we're doing exactly that. We're going to try to do not where it's at now, where the climate is showing us. We're going to try to exceed it and get the maximum capacity we can for the future. So you're absolutely correct.
Yeah, I think we need to be looking at about nine or 10 inch.
Yes.
And so I, I appreciate your time and, and I wanted to give a shout out to Steve Shea. I, I called him. I, I called him about Cherry Hill was flooded all the way across the road. And I said, I realize you've got flooding issues everywhere and, but he got someone out there probably within an hour and shot a picture back to me and that they had cleared whatever it was. It was at, by the way, it was at the same spot that we seem to have a lot of issues with even
Absolutely.
rainfall at that Bushel Stop just east of Vanoy Road on Cherry Hill. And when I went through there, it was all across the road. I witnessed it myself.
Yes, yes.
I wanted to give him a shout out for a quick response and the road crew is doing a good job, really good.
Thank you so much, thank you. They are working really hard.
Madam Chair, to that point also, I do want to applaud Steve Shea. He was, he was there and he was on the phone taking different phone calls from different districts. Well done, Steve. And but Commissioner Anderson, if we get nine inches of rain within one hour, we're in deep trouble.
We are.
And I'm looking at MSNBC and they're showing Germany and China and the rain that they received over the last few days. So climate change across the, the entire planet is real. So thank you all, Commissioner Hades.
Thank you, Mrs. Watt. Thank you, I, I know you and Almika Steele, it was the beginning, my relationship with you. You educated me about the flood in Huron Township and we reroute the ditches and the drain and, and, and I think this problem, it's continuous in some area to certain degrees, some of them larger than the other. As upgrading all those forty one pumps for, for Wayne County resolve the problem or there's some responsibility, the municipality to have to do to increase their capacity of a flow. Because I don't know if the, the, the problem only with Wayne County pump, some municipality have a very old sewage and they didn't comply with the SOS, the separation of the sewage from river and lake. Is the problem be, has to be fixed from both side municipality and the county pump to resolve the problem or we, the pump could resolve the problem totally.
Yes, and thank you for that, you know, Commissioner Haddis, you're absolutely right. And I'm so glad you asked the question because as we're gonna be doing too, we, we understand and recognize this whole infrastructure conversation, especially in the last couple of months with the, with the flooding, whether you're talking about pump stations, whether you're talking about sewer systems. We, it's important we get the clarification there. Pump stations that we have, Wayne County that's own and operate is for our roadways and old roadways only. When you're talking about residential flooding, you're talking about the sewer systems and you're talking about, you know, local municipalities have their own sewer systems, like say, for example, Dearborn, I think they have their sewer system and then they flow and airflow is transferred, you know, over to Gleewa, you know, which is not Wayne County system. When you're talking about the sewer systems now, different than the pump stations for our roadways that Wayne County owns and operate and control, we only have one and that's the Rouge Valley system. So I'm glad Almika is still on the call because she's our official drain commissioner. And she can explain because it's two different conversations. So the, the pump stations and the water for the roadways is really different than the sewer system and, and the cause and effect, what you were saying. All of it is gonna help because anything that you can do to make improvements to your system to mitigate and handle more capacity for that water is gonna help and minimize everywhere. But it's important to know who owns what, what the different names of the systems are and how they interface together. And what's really, you know, we want to be careful what's causing flows to people's residence, residential homes. The pump stations are not gonna cure that because it's just pumping the water and working it for the roadways only, not the residential homes. But Almika, I know you're still on here, even though we're in the afternoon now, if you want to, as our drain commissioner for the county and you oversee our sewer systems, if you wanna shed some light until the commissioner's question.
Hi, good afternoon. Yes, Director Watts is correct. Wayne County owns and operates the Rouge Valley Sewer Disposal System. Wayne County does not own or operate local sewer systems. And it is correct that, you know, our interceptors are transporting flows from our Rouge Valley customers. They're not directly connected to, you know, local resident homes. That would be contributing to, you know, backups that we're seeing, you know, over the last three weeks or so. And with our Rouge Valley system, you know, for the data that we have reviewed operationally and with our engineering consultants, it, it operated, you know, as we expected, obviously under, you know, the intense rainfall that was experienced. For the Rouge Valley system, we also are still though in the middle of improvements to our Rouge Valley system. We're actually under a long-term corrective action plan that will invest about fifty million dollars over the next ten years or so. So we're still actively making improvements to the Rouge Valley system. But you are absolutely correct, Commissioner. It is very, very important though, the Rouge Valley improvements, for example, are gonna help with our interceptors. But it would not address the local systems. Those, what, those projects and things would have to be undertaken by those local municipalities.
Thank you, I really appreciate your answer because I felt through the discussion from the flood start a few weeks ago till now, there's some misunderstanding by the public. Because when we talk as a county, we're gonna upgrade the pump and everybody listening, they think we're resolving the problem for those basement. But there's some responsibility and the municipality to upgrade their system. The county doing what Mrs. Watt mentioned and that would resolve the problem and the roadway. But we need to make the public understand there should be effort, joint effort for municipality in Wayne County, all the forty three county to see, because if some of them comply and have a upgrade their sewage and the one above it didn't, so the flow going through the other community causing a problem. So the problem is, I would hope the county take the leadership with expert like Almika and you, Mrs. Watt, and try to address the problem by municipality and find what's the solution and put it on the table, let the public know. Because there are a lot of, you wouldn't believe, and I think Mrs. Watt know, how many call I get about those thing and they blaming the county and even the county, something the county don't do.
Right.
You know, and, and sometimes some of the municipalities have called your commissioner and it's municipal issue. So but we need, if, you know, I wanna mention this one in short. If we gonna find a solution to protect the public from flooded basement and everything, we should have a consultant, whatever expert we need to find what's the problem, how can be fixed in every municipality. The county do their job and the county's responsibility and every municipality should do their responsibility and have a joint effort, go to the federal government for funding because a lot of municipality can't afford to do it.
Right, and Commissioner, to your point, I believe going back to the focus group that was just just established, that we've only had one meeting and that's gonna be a regional approach because like I said, you have DWSD, Gleewa, you have Eagle, you have a lot of stakeholders at the table to do just that. The suggestion we had this past Monday was to the point, we allowed them and let them know what system we control, which is one, actually Wayne County government. So we did tell them that, you know, the next meeting, they need to include the local communities in southeastern Michigan, especially who service their flow that goes through Gleewa and others, that they need to be at the table. We're talking about a regional solution. So that way they're there because they control their sewer systems and all of us are there to see what a global effort can be. So that way it's not just Wayne County or City of Detroit, it's everyone at the table. So to your point, you're exactly right. And I believe that's what this focus group is gonna accomplish. But we're getting them to the table as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes my, my update. So I don't know if Ted is anxiously waiting.
I am, it's just my turn. Alrighty, I'll, I'm gonna go ahead and start, Commissioner Bill, is it my turn?
I'm talking and I'm on mute, thank you so much, I apologize. Thank you, Director Watts.
Thank you.
Director Star, you're up next, thank you, sir.
Alrighty, thank you, I didn't want to start talking before.
I was just over here talking and nobody heard me but me, but go ahead.
All right, just to, just to give a, a quick summary. Homeland Security Emergency Management, our mitigation efforts of this, of this flood started before the first raindrop. We actually started our mitigation efforts on that Friday, June twenty fifth with notifying communities and all communities in Wayne County of the weather report and of the pending floods and actually issued flash flood warnings in the communities that eventually did flood. That was Friday, on that Saturday morning at four AM, Homeland Security became activated and started our robust response with our response and recovery efforts. As you know, the state of Michigan caught a, a state of emergency that particular Saturday. Our office had boots on the ground in the Dearborn area where we ran into Commissioner Baydum, where we were escorting the lieutenant governor through some of the most ravaged areas in the county. Part of our office is to collect statistical data, which triggers a federal declaration. We began that effort and on July sixth, we had received damage assessments from all of the communities in Wayne County, packaged them in a report and sent them to the state of Michigan by ten PM, meeting our deliverable date. At that time, we were notified that FEMA, the state and SBA would be conducting joint damage assessments starting that Thursday. We submitted our information on Tuesday, they were actually had boots on the ground that Thursday. In my experiences in the past, that has not happened before. That is an extremely quick and fast response to the citizens of Wayne County. Those joint or simultaneously damaged assessments were completed late Saturday night, put in a report given to the state of Michigan. State of Michigan sent them off to the federal government. And within a few days, a couple of days, the federal government actually declared a state declaration. That triggers our FEMA response. Before our FEMA response, our office was in the process of setting up two-one-one calls for citizens in the county. That system is up and running. So for citizens in Wayne County that need assistance, they cannot clean or muck out their basement, they can dial two-one-one. That call center puts them in contact with VOAD, which is a volunteers that aid in disasters. It matches them with different volunteer groups that will assist those citizens in cleaning out their basements. Our office also been very involved with debris management. As you well know, that carpet appliances, furniture was all sent out to the streets. And through our office, through the state of Michigan, we were able to provide debris management for local communities. Also, we were able to provide clean out kits for those citizens. We respond to jurisdictions, we don't have a staff to respond to each local individual. So jurisdictions request similar to PPE, they request a clean out kits. We provide that to that local jurisdiction. They then take it back to their communities and pass it out in their particular communities. We had about six thousand one hundred and seventy nine kits provided to us by the state of Michigan. We also received donations and within forty eight hours, we had to disseminate approximately seven thousand nine hundred clean out kits to our local jurisdictions to provide to our citizens in need in the community. We were also advised that public assistance, public assistance is different than individual assistance. So let me just take thirty seconds to explain the difference because sometimes that can be confused. Right now, the declaration that has been declared by the US President is for individual damages in homes and businesses. The public assistance, which is to local governments for their response time, for equipment that may have failed, for damage that may have occurred in some of our Wayne County buildings. That was due last Friday, July sixteen. Our office again sent that information on to the, the state. Friday at three sixteen PM, we received a call from the state of Michigan to start assisting FEMA, who would have boots on the ground on the weekend with what we call FEMA centers throughout the county. These FEMA centers come in the terms of what we call disaster resource centers and disaster document centers or drop-off document centers. Got that call at three sixteen, by the close of business Friday, we had contacted the local jurisdictions, had arranged for multiple facilities for FEMA to inspect. Sunday, Daniel Elzeff, my staff and I responded back to our health administration building where we met twelve noon with our first group of FEMA boots on the ground. We took them around the county so that they could review and inspect these potential FEMA centers. That has been ongoing until yesterday. FEMA centers probably, that's why we used the word probably, they have to be approved through FEMA. And I've not gotten the official word that they've been approved. But I predict, if I was a predicting person, that there would be FEMA center set up in, for out Wayne County in the city of Dearborn, Dearborn Heights, the points in Harper Woods and potentially Garden City for Western Wayne. With that said, we have been very active in our response in assisting FEMA to provide that assistance to our public. We also have been in contact and we're liaison with FEMA inspectors. Those are the FEMA individuals that have boots on the ground. As of two days ago, I know there were twenty five inspectors that actually going to where citizens have filled out a claims, going, knocking on the doors, going into the homes and inspecting that damage so they can facilitate that particular claim. They were to have about two hundred more sometime around today to the end of the week, making that happen. As well as liaison with the disaster survival assistance teams of FEMA. They are also boots on the ground. Those teams actually walk through the most damaged areas in Wayne County, knock on the door and ask citizens if they need assistance. If that particular assistance, I mean, if that particular citizen needs assistance, assistance is provided on the spot in the form of filling out a damage claim right then and there. So we've been very active with a robust response from our office coordinating with FEMA as well as the state of Michigan. So I look for information to flow later this week on where these centers will actually be set up and when they will be operational and activated. FEMA will staff these particular centers. A dam, a disaster resource center is a place where citizens can go inside, use FEMA equipment, fax, telephones, computers, fill out a complaint, fill out a claim, ask questions about a claim, check the status of their claim, fill out that claim and drop it off there. A disaster document drop-off center is a center in which if a citizen has to drop off documentation, for example, maybe a title to a home, maybe social security number or insurance documents, they can go in and drop that off in a drive-through fashion. If they have questions, obviously they can go into the facility, ask questions and then fill out a claim and drop it off there. Also, there will be what we call a MARK, which is a multi-agency resource center set up in at least two locations. I've not been, I've cannot been confirmed where those locations will be. But these are resources where a citizen have one-stop shopping. They can go and meet with public health, meet with volunteers, meet with Red Cross, meet with FEMA, potentially meet with SBA all in one particular center. So that has been the, the very robust response where we've been rocking and rolling since June twenty fifth. And I'll open myself up for questions if there are questions.
Thank you so much, Director Star, so and just to be clear for my residents, they need to wait until the FEMA operations centers are open to file their FEMA claims? They should go there to do that or is there an online option or a phone number option to file FEMA claims?
No, ma'am, they do not have to wait. As of Sunday, there were already sixteen thousand claims, which had already been received by FEMA. FEMA has a online Uh FEMA has a online uh link that if twenty-four hours a day. If there's any FEMA disaster open any place in the United States, a citizen can go into that website. And fill out that information, there's also a one eight hundred number that's that will uh assist uh FEMA. Folks that wanna fill out that claim, so they do not have to wait. Because these inspectors are already on the ground for people who have filled out a uh a FEMA claim. The disaster resource centers are only there to assist those individuals that may have a question. Or want to go in to a center and meet with maybe multiple agencies, so there's no need to wait. Uh that information is out and they are absolutely conducting these inspections as I speak.
Okay, great, so we'll make sure we get the eight hundred number and that website so that we shared with our residents so that they'll know how to uh. Contact FEMA, um I see a hand from Commissioner Baydum.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair, uh thank you, Mr. Sturd event, for everything that you're doing during these challenging times. I have a question, I don't know if you're able to answer this question, but from your perspective, you from your experience. I know already several Dearborn residents were turned down by FEMA. Uh in in the way they define a finished lower level, for example, if you have. Uh furniture couches in the basement and you have a kitchen. Uh and and this is very uh uh, you know, uh uh in Dearborn, there are many homes like that. Because the size of the homes, a lot of people utilize the lower level as additional space. Uh many of them uh were turned down, I I believe from, do you know if FEMA covers like uh. Finished lower level, if you have furniture and if you have a kitchen that was damaged?
Uh I now have the answer to that question, Commissioner, and um my staff or part of our staff. Have also had their basements destroyed and never missed a beat answering a bail uh for helping other citizens. Uh FEMA is advised that for the lower levels, lower levels are part of a FEMA eligibility. However, when you take a look at the kitchens, and I know that many residents in the Dearborn area specifically. Have a kitchen in the lower level and a kitchen upstairs. The I'm advised by FEMA that the kitchen in the lower level is not deemed essential. Because there's a kitchen upstairs unless they're renting out that lower level. And that lower level is for another person who's living in that kitchen, however, here is the key. If anybody is turned down via FEMA, there is a process in which you can appeal right on the spot. Uh with that uh FEMA appeal, I was just on a a town, a congressional town hall meeting this morning. FEMA representatives were there, that very question came up. And citizens are being uh advised to please fill out the appeal if you're denied anything by FEMA. So if you are denied by FEMA and there you're not eligible for FEMA. The SBA, Small Business Administration, they are an option for citizens to take a look at. They are a loan um business, uh not business, but they provide small interest loans. I'm hearing under five percent, anywhere about three percent for up to thirty years. And if you have a claim for twenty-five thousand dollars or less, you don't have to have any collateral. Uh but you do have to fill out the SBA information. And the SBA is up and running uh in Wayne County in Dearborn Heights at the Caroline Kennedy Library. From the hours of eight AM to five PM, but just Monday through Friday at this time.
So any, any, any loss under twenty-five thousand that uh they don't need to have collateral?
That is correct, I just got that information from a SBA representative today during the town hall meeting.
That's good to know, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, any additional questions for Director Sturd event? A lot of information, uh thank you, Ted and your whole team for, like you said, working without skipping a beat, even though. Some of them had damage to their own homes, we appreciate all the hard work that you're doing. And if you could please just uh maybe shoot it now for that eight hundred number for FEMA. And the website, then we'll get, I'll make sure that gets to all the commissioners.
And what I would do is I will provide this to our directors of communication. I just received this information at ten AM today and so I have not been able to share it with our communication office. But there is a one eight hundred number for FEMA, they are open seven days a week from seven AM to eleven PM Central Time. They do have an online registration, you do have these damage survival assistance teams walking the area. And the FEMA centers will be open, so as soon as I uh get the uh go ahead on the FEMA centers, I will share that information. But I will share that one eight hundred number for both FEMA and SBA.
Fantastic, thank you so very much for your dedication, hard work and service, we truly appreciate you. Um and if there are any other questions, I'm sure Commissioners can uh dial you directly to get those answered. Thank you so much for hanging in there with us, we appreciate you and we.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you're still there, next item?
Such other matters as may properly be submitted before the committee.
Uh no other matters, just to uh note for Commissioners that we will have another committee of the whole on August fourth. And I'll make mention of that on tomorrow during our floor board meeting, next item?
Public comments.
Yeah, anyone from the public, you can unmute everyone, if there's anyone on Zoom who would like to make a public comment? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone on the telephone? And if you could unmute everyone, Octavia? Now Cassie, David. O'Callas?
That's close enough, ma'am, most people call me uh Claus for Santa Claus. Uh good evening, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. Um I've been to a few meetings and I haven't really um asked many questions, so I'm not sure how this process goes.
Uh you have two minutes for comments, we don't do a dialogue back and forth, but. Minutes for um a comment.
Thank you, um, thank you. Um I wanted to thank everybody um involved with the county and the commissioners for doing the great job on the flood response that they have. I am a resident of the city of Harper Woods and um I like that it was explained the difference between the infrastructure between the county and the cities. Because that does make a big difference, and in the city of Harper Woods, this was our worst flood since two thousand fourteen. And we are blessed that we did not get any of the raw sewage in our homes, even though a lot of homes got damaged. And that was because of the great job our public works did with the infrastructure because um. When the one gets too full, a sensor comes on and directs the raw sewage through another way when it gets too full, so. I I have to really give a lot of tutels for everything that all of you have done. Um I was very thankful on the flood kits, those flood kits helped so many residents, it was, it it was incredible. Um when it came to uh FEMA coming to the residents' homes. Um thank you for explaining that because we were advised the day of a FEMA coming out. And many of the residents had assumed that that was for insurance on their homes, uh you know, versus the uh walk through to the uh assess the damage. Um just a little follow-up on the SBA, um I was at that meeting this morning as well. And on the appeal section with the SBA, they advised that if you're denied more than once. Keep on appealing and keep on appealing and keep on appealing until you get that final notice that says you're at your last appeal. And for the loans under twenty-five thousand, there is no pay for eighteen months, but interest is accrued. But the highest interest I believe I heard was three point two percent, so um I just wanted, again, thank you all for everything. And I wanted to uh bring that out, Commissioner Colleen uh has been very good at advising us residents when the meetings are. Um so the only question I have, and maybe I can go and chat, is uh do these presentation meetings email addresses for all of you? Just the main website if we could, and thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, um and I'll answer the last part, if you could put your email in the chat. Will notify you, I will put you on notification list for all of the meetings. And Octavia and Pam, please note his uh email. For future meetings, thank you, anyone else for public comments?
I have one email.
Go ahead, Pam.
This is from Celeste Mintag, Wayne County resident. Good morning, committee members, I'm emailing my comment to present a recommendation to you because I am concerned about. Medical discrimination being implemented with vaccine passports that will have a negative impact for the residents of Wayne County. Recently, a resolution to ban disclosure of medical and vaccination status was passed in Muskegon and Nueago Counties. I am wondering if you share the same concerns with regards to protecting the private medical history and vaccination status of constituents? Would this committee be willing to put the same or similar resolution to show citizens that medical freedom is valued? And a discriminatory two-tier society have no place in Wayne County, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, do you have any other emails?
No ma'am.
Okay, and um Octavia, if you can unmute everyone for one last request for public, public comments? Give everyone the opportunity, if you unmute everyone, Octavia?
Everyone has been asked to unmute themselves if they'd like to speak.
Okay, very good, one more time for public comments, okay, hearing none? Next item, please.
Adjournment.
Okay, thank Commissioners all so much for your time today, a lot of great information, it's important that we stay abreast. Of what's going on with the ARPA as well as the flooding in um response. Well, thank you for your patience for our two and a half hour meeting and um retain a most adjourned.
I'll meet you, Joey.
Okay, thank you all so much, I'll see you at ten o'clock for our floor board meeting, thank you, have a wonderful rest of your day.